President Stevens, did you want me to kick this off? Or did you want just introductions first before we...
Yeah, so what we can do, if you can introduce yourselves, we'll then have the school district introduce themselves. And then after you can jump in and advise the board as necessary.
Okay. So I'm Sarah Rappord. I'm legal counsel to the Providence School Board, affiliated with a firm, Willen Corrente and Landers.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Charles Ruggerio. I'm here on behalf of the superintendent of the Publicity Administration, relative to the recommendation before you this evening.
Good evening, I'm Julie Dariel, the chief talent officer for Providence Public Schools.
Hi, girl.
Nikki Dargan, executive director for Labor Relations for Providence Public Schools.
So the action item here this evening is an open session discussion of the non-renewal of, I believe it's only two probationary teachers.
That's correct.
I, as I said, am legal counsel to the Providence School Board, rather recently engaged to assist the school board in situations such as this. The purpose of this action tonight is to hear presentations by the superintendent regarding his recommendation to the Commissioner of Education in February not to renew the employment of certain probationary teachers for the forthcoming school year. The two probationary teachers who have elected to convene these presentations in open session are Emma, and I'm hoping I say their name correctly, Schulter Schluter, and Samantha Wallace. Each of these educators, as the board may recall, was working for the Providence Public School Department as a probationary teacher in the year which has just concluded, the 24-25 school year. On February 13th, each of these two teachers received a written order from the Commissioner notifying each that their employment with the school department would end at the close of the school year. Because the Commissioner had determined, based on the recommendation of the superintendent, that the department could find a more qualified teacher as not, as yet unidentified. The standard that the Commissioner invoked, namely, "could find a more qualified teacher as yet unidentified", is based on state law that really goes back to the 1970s, that invests the school department, and specifically its leadership through the superintendent, with the responsibility to exercise professional judgment, to assess whether a probationary teacher should be retained. As you may know, administrators have, in the state of Rhode Island and also in other states in the country, approximately three years, or three, in particularly, three years out of five to make a judgment about tenure. That's what it really boils down to. And over that three-year period, the teacher's status is probationary. Unlike a employee who may be six months probationary, who can be let go without cause, because of the nature of this profession, the probationary period has been extended, under state law, to a period of three years, within a five-year period. This boils down to, as some of you may know from experience in working on the board, the opportunity at three different times, specifically before March 1st, in accordance with state law, for the administration to let the probationary teacher go without cause. The only constraint, under the law, that, as I said, began in 1978 and has been endorsed by the Rhode Island Supreme Court, the only constraint is that the decision of the administration, the superintendent, through his or her or their staff, cannot be arbitrary and capricious. And that also, under the law, has a very particular legal meaning. And it means kind of what it sounds like. It means, as examples have been given, it can't be because the superintendent or the principal had some unprincipled dislike of someone that had nothing to do with teachers. And I went back and looked at all the ride decisions. I, as you know, worked for Providence School Board from 2003 to 2008. And, let's see, a smile there. And really, it began in that period that there was some serious evaluation of quality. And I'm not going to bore you with the historical context, but the legal premise of the probationary period is to afford some leeway at a period of time to make a judgment about obtaining the best. So it isn't a tenure decision that has the exactitude of a tenure decision at Brown, or Roger Williams, or some other university, but it's supposed to be demanded. And beginning, I think, it's my legal historic experience, having worked at the beginning of this more modern period, that it really began to be used as a tool in the early 2000s, although there was law that afforded that discretion prior to that. The important point is, to emphasize, is that a decision of non-renewal has both a good side and a bad side, depending upon how you view the situation. On the more positive side, or on the gentler side, it does not mean that a teacher who is non-renewed is a bad teacher. It doesn't mean that there is good and just cause because the teacher has done something wrong. And looking at it from a legal and evidentiary point of view, what it also means is that this is not a hearing at which, either here or before the Commissioner, there's going to be an adjudication of good and just cause, which, from my experience, is a very strong bastion of protection for teachers in this state, because good and just cause means a lot and doesn't happen lightly and without a lot of attention to detail. This is an arbitrary and capricious standard, which, under the many cases that have been issued by the Commissioner, means that the decision, or the recommendation, because this is all by way of recommendation of the superintendent, is presumptively to be upheld unless the teacher is able to prove and carry the burden of proving that the decision was devoid of factual basis. Devoid of factual basis. There is no dispute that that is an extremely difficult challenge in the context of proving the case for the teacher. It also is intentionally designed, as a matter of law, to afford deference to the professional judgment of the administration. It doesn't mean that there isn't any content. It doesn't mean that when the representative of the administration gives reasons, that you can't question it. But it does mean that this is not a good and just cause hearing. And if you've ever experienced one, you will know the difference. So going back to the process here. The Commissioner issued these orders in February of 2025. She had in front of her at the time recommendations with the supporting information from the superintendent. And I, I, I will, we will expect that Mr. Ruggerio will explain that process of calling the information and presenting it to the Commissioner. Under the law, those recommendations today, because of innovations by the General Assembly that are at least on paper designed to be reformist, those recommendations by the superintendent must be informed by the judgment of building principals, who are invested with today, the responsibility not only to make recommendations to hire, but make recommendations to end employment relationships in their buildings. And that was a big change by the General Assembly, tracking some of the innovations of Massachusetts to restore accountability to buildings and building leadership. When those orders issued in February, each of the teachers, not each of the teachers who received the order, but 15 of the teachers challenged those orders by way of appeal, under state law. And because this school department is, by order of reconstitution, run by the Commissioner, for better or worse, and those are all political questions that are not before you today, the Commissioner has the final say. So she issued the orders on the recommendation of the superintendent, and the appeal is to her. So this is a second chance at changing the mind. And typically, that happens in front of you. You make a decision, and then you get an appeal, and you have a hearing. But because she is, for whatever good, better, or difference, she is attempting to remediate this, this school department, she is hearing the appeals. They're there, the appeals are there. And the effort was made here, based on the consensus that this group delivered, to afford you the opportunity to weigh in. So the decision has been made, the appeal is in front of the Commissioner, and the task here today is to issue an advisory opinion. At the hearing in front of the Commissioner, which is a hearing officer, the superintendent, through legal counsel, will likely present documents and witnesses. There will be cross-examination. There will be an opportunity to question, obviously. That is not what's happening here today. This is not an evidentiary hearing, and it is not an appeal hearing. It is an attempt to solicit the input of a new board, which wasn't positioned as of late February to do this work, but is now, to get your input, to get your involvement, and to deliver this advisory input to the Commissioner, who is now hearing the appeal. The process is much simplified, compared with what will happen at the Department of Ed. To start, the superintendent, through legal counsel, is going to make a presentation regarding each teacher, the two, to explain in summary form why the superintendent made the recommendation, and why the Commissioner endorsed that recommendation, that there was a more qualified educator who could be identified to fill the position. At the conclusion of that presentation, there will be an opportunity for you folks to, on the board, to ask questions, and I leave to the President how to mediate those questions. I'm going to stand down and let you do your work. Then the teacher, either directly or through legal counsel, and I believe Mr. De Simone is here, will facilitate a response to the presentation. And this is an important point legally, although it's tricky to get your head around it, even though the superintendent goes first, the burden of proving the case still rests with the teacher. And at the end of that, the board again can ask questions. Then the board will deliberate in open session, and then at the conclusion, take a vote, a roll call vote, and as a result of that vote, issue an advisory opinion regarding the Commissioner's order. And it will be transmitted to legal counsel for the Commissioner tomorrow or the next day. Please understand again that the process here is limited legally to the question of whether the superintendent's recommendation was arbitrary and capricious. If the teacher believes that the recommendation constituted unlawful discrimination in violation of standard federal law, the teacher has the right and retains the right to file a complaint with the Commission for Human Rights or a court, in accordance with those rules. This is not a hearing designed to adjudicate that legal question, which itself is a complex one, or has certain rules attended to it. So that, that's a separate proceeding, and what happens here doesn't foreclose the teacher from doing that in a different forum. So just so you know your job in this limited lane. And, and I will assist in any way I can in helping frame questions, but they're really for you to ask, and for the folks here to attempt to, to answer as best they can. And with that, I'm going to let Mr. Ruggerio turn to the first teacher of the two. I don't know his decision rate order. I just wanted to give the background.
Thank you, Council. Before I do that, I would just like to go through, I think there's some process questions I would like to orient you with before we proceed with each of the recommendations and the basis for the recommendations for each of these two teachers before you this evening. So first, and make sure you can hear me okay. First, pleasure to be here with you this evening. I'd like to thank Council for the board on the thorough explanation as to the legal standard and some of the procedural history and context behind it. What I would like to reiterate is that this is not a termination case. This is a case and a recommendation to simply not extend a teaching contract into a successor year. And that recommendation has to be based upon a good faith belief that the superintendent believes that he can find a more qualified teacher for this position. But that belief and its genesis starts with the day-to-day observations of the building administrators. They're the ones that are positioned to observe these teachers, to make determinations about how they're progressing in their professional practice, how their students are doing, and whether they believe these teachers should be awarded tenure following the conclusion of their probationary period. And the decision to award a teacher tenure is the most significant professional decision in the life of a teacher. That decision carries legal significance. And just as you may be familiar with what tenure means for a university professor, it has a similar context within public education at the elementary and secondary level. It is significant legal achievement. And what it means is that we no longer proceed with a termination process that's not supported by just cause. And as you may be familiar, I think some of you certainly are, the process for terminating a teacher when you have evidence of misconduct is a significantly lengthy, protracted, expensive process. So the rationale that the legislature has crafted as it relates to these probationary decisions is that if you have a good faith belief, you should be able to make that determination and rely upon the discretion of your building administrators, who are there on the day-to-day to observe the professional practice, to make a determination before awarding tenure as to whether you think this is someone you would like to have with you for the rest of your career within this district. Because that's what it essentially means to be awarded tenure. You're basically giving someone lifetime employment barring some significant misconduct in this district. So this is our opportunity to really scrutinize and ensure that we're only giving teachers tenure that we believe will be successful over the course of a 20-, 30-year professional practice with our students in this district. This is not, you know, there may be teachers that are better suited to instruction in other districts. There may be great people who just aren't, in our experience, suited to be long-term teachers with us here in Providence. And those are the decisions that have to be made during this critical juncture in each teacher's career. So I think what's important to understand is that these decisions, these recommendations come from building-level administrators. Annually, the process proceeds with HR sending a list of probationary teachers to each school. Administrators at each of those schools identifying which teachers are theirs within their schools, and then making a determination as to whether you think you want to award, continue to proceed with potentially awarding tenure to that probationary teacher. Those recommendations are then forwarded to Human Resources. Human Resources reviews them, looks to see if there is some evidentiary support, some observations that support the idea of, you know, we think we have a good faith belief that we can find somebody that would be better in this position. Following that, there's a recommendation to the superintendent regarding the principal's referral. The superintendent also scrutinizes it. And in this case, there's the unique circumstance of proceeding thereafter to the Commissioner, who then also reviews the recommendation with the superintendent, given the authority that she presently has under the crowd. So that is the process. And since 2020, it's been the responsibility of these school administrators, under the Education Accountability Act, to effectively make these decisions regarding which teacher should be retained in the district. That's their authority, and the legislature saw fit to vest that authority within them, because they're the ones closest to, they're the ones observing the professional practice on the day-to-day basis. So that is the backdrop that I want to understand, the process that was employed for each of the nominal determinations that were made, and we started out with, you know, significantly more, there's only presently two being heard tonight in open session, and those teachers have elected to have this matter heard in open session, rather than a closed session. With the understanding that we will be talking about some of their performance and concerns that we've had with their performance that prompted the determination to move forward with their non-renewal. So, that being said, I think I would like to first proceed with teacher M. Schluter as the first referral, and I will briefly go through the basis for the recommendation for teacher Schluter. So I know Mr. De Simone, I believe, represents the...
It's here.
Okay.
You can move it on the chair now.
So I'm going to ask, maybe you guys swing on this side of me. I'll have him come over here.
Oh my God, he's eight, 100 million bucks. It's only about 100 million bucks.
So good evening. This is the superintendent's recommendation regarding the non-renewal of teacher M. Schluter. Teacher Schluter, you know, basis for the recommendation for teacher Schluter is based upon continued struggles to perform job duties to the standard expected of district teachers during the first year.
Just maybe we should have a little background on where, and...
Sure. I can do that, that's not a problem.
To orient the board.
And really quick too, Sarah, when, when they're done with their case, if we could, like, when the board has asked questions, Phil, if it's okay, if you have to interject at any moment, interject, you just make sure we are, you know, protected, I would say, okay? Does that sound appropriate?
I will, I will...
Or just give me the flag, okay?
So, no, that's, that's helpful, to provide a little bit of background.
Yeah, I, I, I don't.
Sure. So teacher M. Schluter is a teacher, a middle school English ESL teacher at Del Cesto Middle School. She, they have been in that position for, I believe this is their 30-year in the district?
Second year.
I'm sorry.
Second year.
And the basis for the recommendation for the nominal teacher Schluter is continued struggles to perform the job duties expected of teachers within the district. There's repeated struggles throughout the course of this school year to complete grading during the provided district timelines for students. Multiple instances of principal having to follow up about grades not being submitted for students on teacher Schluter's caseload. Grading show that they consistently fell behind in submitting grades in comparison to other grade six teachers at Del Cesto. And according to the principal, only 4.5% of teacher Schluter's grades were completed on time by targeted deadlines. In addition to that, there's continued concerns about their attendance, or repeated inability to perform, to provide consistent and predictable attendance throughout both this school year and last school year. As of today, teacher Schluter has been out 24 times. They've been criminally absent. They've been late several times as well. And in addition to this year, last year, they were also absent 17 times. So for a district in turnaround where we have an incredible focus on student attendance, you know, that attendance requirement also has to be embodied by our educators, and their continued absence and chronic absenteeism has been an ongoing concern throughout both this year and last year. In addition to that, last year, teacher Schluter received a developing evaluation score. So there has been some progress. There is not presently a final effectiveness rating for this year. And just by way of educating the board, in the last school year, only 6.7% of teachers throughout the entire district received a score of developing or ineffective. So in terms of who we're looking at, a Belker, that would be, you know, in the lowest, you know, 6.7% of teachers throughout the district. So given that, given our needs as a district, our turnaround requirements, the focus on professional practice, that was the basis for the non-renewal recommendation from the superintendent to the Commissioner.
Do any members of the board have any follow-up questions about this school?
If I have questions more about the process, should we hold that to court? Are we going to, are we going to ask questions?
Can we, can we do with this one? Can we have, so the district one, can we have, until you go as well with the legal counsel and then?
Sure. That's fine. I just, I want to stop.
I just, I wanna stop.
Did we not identify everybody else?
You did, but maybe reiterate their roles, just so...
Sure, so I'm, to my left is Gina De Dario, who is the chief of human capital, and Mickey Dargan, the chief of...
Executive director.
Executive director of labor relations. Thank you for the district, thank you.
So you wanna proceed with the Mr. De Simone?
Any general questions that have been raised?
Yes.
Thank you, members of the board, congratulations to the winners, you're the 23 members of the board. In response to Mr. De Dario's presentation of my client, you know, I disagree with the history that he described. I think it's important for him to understand that M. was recruited from California, she came here to teach from California, she taught two years at City Year, and she was dedicated to, and is dedicated to the City of Providence School. She's teaching in an ESL for sixth grade English. Her evaluation last year was, as Charlie said, 2.46, but her evaluation this year was 3.47.
Okay.
So she greatly increased her teaching skills during the second, the first and the second year. And she's been enrolled at URI and Roger Williams to get certs for a middle school English, secondary English, and protective test. She's done very well on her test, she's passed all her practice tests, she's well positioned to be successful in Providence. And I think that there's been a lot of students and community people who have supported her, who recognize her efforts and her teaching ability. So I do take issue with the way this happened. The particular school that she's in received the new principal just after Thanksgiving. So this new principal made a recommendation to nonrenewal this teacher, she's never witnessed her in the classroom, she's never approached her with any constructive criticism, anything, she's never talked to her about what she was doing, and I think it's premature to nonrenewal this teacher. So I would also suggest, her students' SLOs are far better than the others. The total points for the effectiveness of the students in her class is 3.47, which is outstanding.
So that one's, it was exceeded?
It exceeded 3.47, right?
It's either not met and it exceeded.
It exceeded. So she exceeded, the performance of her students exceeded the expectations. That combined, obviously, student results are the most important thing, what kids are learning, her kids learned very well and exceeded expectation, her evaluation went up. And her principal was new, and didn't have a chance to review her, to help her, or anything like that. So I think that is arbitrary and capricious, right? It's not, it's not, it's not, arbitrary and capricious. Well, if you didn't, if you didn't talk to your teacher, you didn't review her skills, you didn't observe her in the classroom, and she gets a very tremendous evaluation, how is the decision to nonrenewal put it based on? It's certainly not based on any fact. And so I would submit to the board that, you know, this particular teacher has done very, very well, she's been not coached at all. You know, one of the things that Mr. De Dario brought up was the administration having the ability, you know, by statute to make these determinations. Well, with responsibility or decision-making comes responsibility. I would argue to this board, it's up to these administrators to go into these classrooms, the principals, the vice principals, to go into these classrooms and make observations about how the teachers are instructing, whether or not the kids are learning, how the evaluation's going. You didn't hear any of that. You heard a broad, general, vague process, but I can tell you, it's uncontroversial that the principal started after the Thanksgiving recess. And never, at any time, did that principal observe M.'s classroom. Never. So whatever recommendation came out of a lack of homework is a bad recommendation. And, you know, I would suggest to the board that, contributing to what Ms. Rapp said, I disagree with the legal decision that the board is gonna state, and I think the board does have to stay with the higher-class teachers, and I don't agree that the commissioner has that absolute power. For administrative, yes, but not... No way in the Crowley Act did that determination specifically been stated, and we're appealing that now. And I don't know why the board doesn't join me in that appeal, but that's a separate issue. So I would say to the board, this is a very good teacher, a dedicated teacher, her evaluation is superb, she hasn't been viewed by any principal or any administrator in her classroom, her kids' scores are exceeding expectations, and I can't think of any reason why the district would want to nonrenewal this particular teacher. If you have any questions, I would be glad to answer them. You know, one thing that was brought up was attendance, you know, Amy has asthma, and she had an attack after, after the nonrenewal went in. So those absentee days were after the recommendation, which I find somewhat, you know, concerning because it tells me that the district really didn't have anything to say, so they had to throw that in there. But that issue has resolved itself, but again, we should be talking about what was made, what did the district know, what information did the superintendent get at the time the nonrenewal occurred? And that was, you know, in January sometime, or December sometime, however it is, far after, far before any type of asthma kicked in. So I would suggest to this board that everything that I see, which counts through the performance, evaluation, rating the community, teaching here from California, that works with these kids, loves teaching, obviously has a lot of support, I would suggest that the board should not go with the recommendation of the superintendent. And my client is here, he can answer any questions he may have as well as I.
Well, love for Mr. De Dario also.
Yeah, just a brief response, and I'm trying to just be purely factual, but to suggest that the administrator did not have communication with teacher Schluter regarding, you know, the deficiencies, the concerns about late submissions of grades is just not factually accurate. You know, the, again, and I have documentation which we'll present during the subsequent hearing before the commissioner regarding, you know, those issues, that again, was consistently behind the submission of grades for her students and her peers. And I would suggest, as it relates to the attendance issue, you know, during the first three years as a probationary employee, you're getting the best conduct you can possibly get from a probationary employee. You know, wait till you get tenure and see what the conduct becomes like after that. So this is our process and our opportunity to really scrutinize that, and you got people that are on, you know, their best behavior, they're making their best effort because they know for a probationary period. So, you know, I would just suggest to you that, in all likelihood, you know, in my experience having done this for over 20 years, those issues don't get better.
Thank you. Any final thought?
I would just, I would just like to break one thing out in terms of the... This particular teacher was issued an oral recommendation for the attendance, then they found out that she had bronchitis as a result of the asthma, and they rescinded it. They rescinded it. So I would suggest, any type of suggestion that attendance was a problem really is pale and falls short of what this board should be.
Is that true, Commissioner?
I am not aware of any recision of an oral warning.
Got you. Dr. Williamson, Chairman Jones, and, oh, I'm so sorry. Let me go to the chairman first, and then I'm gonna make my way in order down this report channel.
Oh, thank you, Charles, it's good to see the superintendent. I have a comment and also a question. Let this be an example, we are supposed to have these meetings in favor, you know, because of our... And so, George, and also to the superintendents that made the decisions to bypass the board, next, that issue should never, never, never happen ever again.
Yeah?
Because we are the school board, the school board is saying in advisory board, you skipped us and went straight, straight away to the commissioner, that's not right. Now we're driving this whole thing into general, we were supposed to have responses to them by March. Now, my question, after the evaluation by the new principal, did the principal offer you a mentorship or to be coached?
There was no observation by the new principal. She's never observed.
Thank you.
One more, one more.
I just would note that there was also a par-supporting teacher for Ms. Schluter during the, you know, during this school year, there was additional support provided by a par-coach, and those par-coaching sessions and opportunities to receive that support were frequently also missed by teacher Schluter, who just, you know, would forget about opportunities to meet with the teacher, would be at, working with the school musical instead of working on professional practice with the par instructor. And I'm just going based upon the report of the par instructor.
Yeah, so listen, we're bottle, and then I'm gonna go to Dr. Williamson.
So obviously, BB's like that, and Pa was over, she, Pa never got completed, not because of my client, because it never, it never got completed.
She, I only got seven of 15 sessions because my par instructor went out on maternity leave. I have a link up of Justin Walters that says Adam was supposed to take over, and Adam never did.
So I have one, I have one factual question, and then I have a couple of questions about procedural things. So, and maybe a bit of a statement in between. So the, the absences that this particular administrator cited, I'm sorry, not the absences, the late grades, were the grades late in the other three, three prior semesters? Two pri, oh, I'm starting from anyone? Two, two prior semesters, right? Yeah. So were the grades late in previous semesters, or was this a one-on?
When you say previous semester, which semesters are your prior?
So the other semesters that...
Prior to?
M. had taught at the Providence Public Schools.
I think the question was directed, if you know Mr. De Dario.
The information I have is mostly with respect to this past school year, from the president administrator, so I can't answer as a testimony.
Would have been, would have been for that semester, the basis would have been?
Would have been subsequent to her arrival, pregnant, moved out.
Right, so for the other quarter? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay. So some of the grades, some of the grades were late, we don't know. But not, we don't know what percent.
Correct, well, I'm, no, in terms of the percentage, 4.5% were completed on time. Like in terms of which, you're just saying that's just limited to the experience of this existing administrator team at Del Cesto.
And would like to respond to that.
So, the, the backdrop, so she cemented a nonrenewal, as we know, January 6th. The first time she called me into her office to speak, and this is the first time she ever spoke to me, was January 22nd, and that was to discuss this quote-unquote chronic absenteeism in my grading. At this point, I had had bronchitis for almost two months, I was actually taken out of Del Cesto in an ambulance, which I got an oral recommendation for. I was doing, I'm still doing two master's programs at once, and I was covering every single day. So I was doing my best, but there was a lot of other continuing issues on top of that, on top of, I had no support.
Okay. I just wanted some clarity on that one. My, my larger issue with this process is that when it, when there is the appearance, right, because of the disproportionate number of faculty who are getting dismissed or non-binary, my, my sort of apprehension with that, right, is that, you know, the problem with implicit bias is it's implicit. So the person who has the bias may not know that they have the bias, right? So it's very, sometimes it's very difficult to figure out, what, you know, how did this process, so it's important, it's important to know how the process happened. And I'm not pretending to be an educational expert, and I'm not gonna try to like intervene and like individual, like how principals are running their schools or anything, that would be completely insane because I don't have the basis of experience to do that or the particular expertise. But I think from where we're sitting, my job is to, and anybody feel free to correct me if I'm wrong about this, to see that the processes that we're using are rational, right? So when I say, how does somebody initially get flagged for nonrenewal, I would like to hear that there's a process involving statistical analysis of performance of teachers in the system currently, that there's a process of, that there's, there's evidence first, and then we say, oh, well, oh, this person isn't, isn't meeting that standard, let's, let's work on, let's, let's go further, right? And instead, what I hear is that somebody gets flagged for nonrenewal first, and then we put together the evidence.
I'm gonna intervene, and I think you, I, I appreciate the enthusiasm for that perspective, but you have to understand that this process is, is being handled against a backdrop of 50 years of law. And what you're asking and what you're describing is that, is the very, is the very argument that the General Assembly made to not do that. So, yes, implicit bias can affect decisions, but even if you were in front of the Rhode Island Commission for Human Rights, you have to have evidence, evidence of discrimination, and the data points that you have here do not obligate the district to create a process that the General Assembly has specifically told school districts they don't have to have.
So let me...
So you're, you're saying, this is what I would want, and the law against which these folks are operating doesn't work that way.
Okay, so, so let's set that aside, right? How do, how do I, what is my assurance that somebody, that, that initial step, that initial decision to flag for somebody for nonrenewal is not arbitrary and capricious? And I think the answer is, your answer to me, if I'm right, right, will be this idea that there's a more qualified candidate who can be identified for the job.
The legal standard asks you to ask, is this, are they lying? Is this made up? It's a, it's a very different legal standard from, are they doing it in a way that satisfies the good and just cause? They're basically, you're basically asking here, was it, do you believe that it was arbitrary?
Yeah, it's a good faith belief. Do you have a good faith belief that you can find a better qualified teacher for that position?
Okay, so...
And what we're relying upon is everything that I just told you to demonstrate that.
Okay, and this more qualified teacher, I mean, is sort of high-powered at the moment, right? Is this purely high-powered? Or is that, or is that standard of a better teacher based in your experience with the current crop of teachers or the applicant pool who are seeking jobs?
So that's, that's a really good question. And the answer to that question, and I'll, of course, you have Board Counselor, I quote you as well, but it's based upon the professional experience... but it's based upon the professional experience of the individual making the recommendations. So, you know, when you're making this determination as a superintendent or as the commissioner, you're basing it upon your knowledge of existing marketplace, other teachers that you've been able to recruit, retain in the district, and the performance standards of those other individuals. So, so, you know, but the actual legal standard requires the individual who's challenging that good faith belief to prove that they're in fact the most qualified teacher for that position. So, that's, it's a very deferential legal standard as it relates to the burden of approval. But in terms of making the demonstration and the good faith belief, it's based upon the superintendent's experience, his familiarity with the teachers that he presently has, and his familiarity with the recruitment that we're going through throughout the district.
Is it the superintendent's?
Good faith belief.
Good faith belief, or is it the principal's?
It's, it's the superintendent's based upon the data and the information that he is relying upon, which is from this, from the individual principals that he's got.
So, really quick, and Dr. Williamson, you can continue in a second. So, the typical process would be the principal will make a recommendation, it will go through a legal process, and then the superintendent would make a good faith decision, is that correct?
Correct.
What is, what's the process after that? And I'm not talking about Crowley Act involved, I'm just saying common process. Because I was reading up on lore, actually, and it said that the next phase of that process would be, it would go before typically the school committee, and I read wrong about that. So, then I think if it goes before the school committee, I think now it's our job to make a good faith belief on if we think that this is
But you don't have any question experience.
But that doesn't warrant us from being board members and making that good faith belief.
So, what, but what I'll say, Mr. President, if I can, is, you know, the way the process is supposed to work is that you have, and we'll talk outside of Crowley Act. Right, so outside of the Crowley Act, you are the one issuing the statement of cause for non-renewal. The recommendation's coming through the superintendent. And, you know, based upon that recommendation, you'll rely upon him who has the professional experience working with teachers, knowing what you're able to do in terms of recruitment and HR, as to whether he has that good faith belief. So, you're kind of utilizing your position, or the board's utilizing its position, to really scrutinize first what the basis is, is there a rational basis? And then it really comes down to whether you believe in the professional judgment of the people that are on the ground in the superintendent. And ultimately, you know, that's what these recommendations come down to. Do you believe in the professional judgment of the people that are witnessing the performance on the day-to-day basis?
And really quick, because I know we have other board members that wanna comment on this. If you could just give a brief comment, I don't know if you have any final thoughts, Dr. Williamson, you can go to Chandler Jones, but if you can go really quick.
Just to address Dr. Williamson's comments and comments of the legal council or the board. I disagree with the board's analysis of your role. He makes a recommendation to the board. The board makes a decision. You don't have to accept his recommendation. And any board, whether it's a zoning board, a jury, any board takes their life experience with them, and they take their common sense. And if you feel as though the process that was used doesn't meet your expectations, you have every right, in fact, I would argue, you have a duty to reject the recommendation. Because only by you rejecting certain recommendations will the process change. So, what they're trying to say to you is, oh, you know, you're handcuffed. You're not handcuffed. You hear all the evidence, and like Mr. Williamson said, maybe, how did she get picked? Did she get picked out of a hat? How did she get picked? So, I would argue, the process here stinks. You have a principal that came after Thanksgiving. What type of recommendation, what type of analysis did the principal do?
For A.
And for the other teacher? You could take your life experience and say, I don't think it was founded on anything. I just gave you examples where his students exceeded the expectations. So, I wholeheartedly disagree with the explanation of Ms. Rappel and Mr. Ogerio. Somehow, they're trying to limit your comprehension of this issue. You are free to do whatever you want, as long as you do it based on, you know, constitutional issues, not be a prejudiced, not being ethically motivated or anything like that. If you're basing it on a process that you don't agree with, you have every right to reject it. And we're not talking about the superintendent. He didn't witness M. He relied on what his principal told him. And we know the principal didn't get there until after Thanksgiving. So, what is that? I would suggest that you've got two good teachers in front of you, and you should not accept that recommendation.
Thank you, Dr. Williamson, final comments, and then directly to Chandler.
I have no further questions or comments.
Chandler.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask the district, what are the, if there are the accommodations for teachers that are doing, you know, some type of furtherance for their education?
No, I mean, they're expected to complete their professional responsibilities like any other teacher.
I have a couple of detailed questions to ask, a follow-up on. Councilor Ogerio, you mentioned that for the entire district, only six, do I have this number right? Only six point seven percent of the entire district teaching staff has had a developing or ineffective rating? Is that correct? There were a lot of numbers in the meeting, so I wanna make sure I'm citing the correct thing.
So, it depends upon the year, actually, I'm sorry, for twenty-three, twenty-four, it was ten percent for twenty-two, twenty-three, it was six point five percent.
Sorry, repeat that, ten percent for school year?
Ten percent for twenty-three, twenty-four. Six point five percent for twenty-two, twenty-three.
Thanks for clarifying that piece. No, I'm not even gonna make a comment about that. I, I, well, actually, I will. I think that that is, that is to say then, that somewhere between, somewhere between ninety percent and above of our teaching staff is considered effective or highly effective in PBSD.
Correct.
Okay. So, that
All levels of experience, no matter how many years that I've been teaching.
Excuse me.
Yeah, no comment, please.
This is time for the board to ask questions. Okay, another question I had, when you said that only four point five percent of the grades were completed on time, I know there were a few questions before, but can you clarify what time period that was over? It looks like your colleagues have their data digging, so if you're looking, I can ask my next data question.
As of January, prior to, was it prior to the ARC writing assessment? Yeah, just prior to the ARC writing assessment in January.
Could you say that a little louder?
Sure, so just prior to the writing assessment for the American Reading Company in January.
And then, another question I had was around the attendance tracking. I understand there were questions from my colleagues around the reasons for attendance. I just wanna name, as a parent of students in PBSD, and as someone who has heard from many, many parents within this forum and other spaces, that there have been questions and concerns from families about the way that we track student attendance, and what we've learned and been told time and again is that while there is empathy and concern for the reasons why students may be out for any given time, that an absence at some point is an absence, it's still lost learning time. And so, I do understand that that is at least one consideration in this process for teacher attendance, because while I have deep empathy for any professional who needs to be out for any human reason, we all have that, the impact to students is the same, whether that is for a medical reason or not. I have, you know, I don't wanna use a lot of I statements right now, but my family and others around me have had the experience of having chronically absent teachers, and that is a significant thing. And again, oftentimes, when teachers are out a lot, it's not because they don't care or don't wanna be there. They have a really good reason, but ultimately, the students that are in class don't have teacher that day. So, I don't wanna minimize attendance as a consideration. I think my final question or concern that wasn't there to me in this process, I think when we heard about the non-renewals in general before, we heard some other steps or some other humans that were involved potentially between the principal's recommendation and the superintendent. Like, it's not just Principal X meets with Superintendent Montañez, and that's the end of the process.
That's correct.
Councilor, can you talk a little bit more about the other individuals within PBSD at the building or supervisory level that might have been involved in that conversation?
Sure, so the individual transformation officers, after the recommendation is made by the principal, the individual transformation officers or executive directors meet with HR collectively. There's a team of about five or six people that review that, including the executive director that oversees whether the certain transformation schools, secondary schools, elementary schools. They review, they ensure that there is evidence to base the recommendation off of, and the concerns that they questioned the administrator regarding the concerns. And there's a healthy dialogue that happens there before the, before the recommendation's moved on to the superintendent for his consideration. And then during the course of that conversation, you know, it's usually myself, the chief of human capital, the superintendent, usually the superintendent's chief of staff or someone else in his cabinet, that then will sit down and review those recommendations with the superintendent for potential non-renewal to the commissioner or to the board.
And then I think my final clarification is, I'm sorry, I missed who was talking about this. Can you, I heard a lot of concern from my colleagues around the way that the process is set up, and I heard our board counsel and PBSD council talk about, you know, what that process is and what our responsibility is here to make. I just, if we could have clarification again about the Education Accountability Act and how that works, how we're with schools or local decision-making, or a phrase that I hear a lot is, you know, having site-based management or these other pieces. Can someone speak a little bit more on what that means and why that's important in this process?
So, the Educational, the Educational Accountability Act invested building principals with primary authority over the buildings. I will say that the building principal who, so if a building principal changes, there is a, the building principal who oversaw the teacher the first year provided information, or the assumption is that the building principal provided information to the next building principal. So, building principals do change. The statute invests whatever principal is there with the authority to make decisions regarding the building. So, if the principal comes in at the beginning of the school year, that principal still has a responsibility as of March to look up, or prior to March first, to look at the status of the staff and make judgments. You don't just, you know, extend the Teacher Tenure Act by virtue of a change of principal. I'm not sure I'm making that clear, but it's, it's the building principal as a position, not the particular building principal who happens to be there. It's the leadership of the building. So, I think it's not a personal endowment, it's a positional one. And that person is supposed to learn about the building and be educated about the building from the first day. And it's designed to create more accountability, as Mr. De Simone said, and responsibility for principals over their buildings. And it is, it is a designation in the statute to be a recommendation to the superintendent. The principal doesn't have final say in his faith over anything. So, there is an assumption that information gets transmitted to the superintendent by virtue of the principal's leadership in the building. And
And just to add, so the way the structure is set up, it's, you know, the, as the council indicated, in the capacity as an administrative responsibility to make certain staff determinations for each school. And those determinations include which teachers to retain, which teachers to nominate, which teachers to recruit. And though those recommendations in the district, our size, are still going to the superintendent, you know, those aren't people that he can actually have day-to-day observations of, day in and day out. So, he's relying upon his administrative team at the building in terms of their recommendations for retention and recruiting of teachers.
Are you done?
I'm
Okay. Chandler.
I guess this is just kind of clarification on our job here today, and the standard. I know the standard emphasizes that this is not a good and just hearing. This is whether the superintendent's decision is arbitrary or capricious, which is that there was some language before, it's like, where this evidence will lie? Is this, is this evidence true? And so, my question is, the evidence that was presented, is that evidence just from the principal that started in November, or is that also evidence from before?
Yeah, so the collection of attendance information is obviously a collection across multiple years. The evidence that I was referring to as related to the developing score, that's something I've collected over several years. The evidence regarding teachers, excuse me, regarding grades being submitted on time and the consistent, the consistent need to reinforce getting grades in on time and having those done, that was predominantly obtained from the existing administrator who started in November.
Just one more question. So, the six, when you said six percent of educators, only six percent of educators received a developing score, was that all educators? Do you have the statistic, what would it be for educators in their first year?
I don't have first-year educators.
Yeah.
I can, you know, I don't have that readily available, Steve. I could probably get it for you.
A question, what, and I don't know if this is something the district can answer. What is considered chronic absent in the school department? It's considered a staff member being privately absent?
There's no specific criteria for staff members. When I was referring to it, I was kind of borrowing the terminology that we utilize for students, which I believe is, which is considered a lot. Our expectation that staff would be significantly less than that, especially, you know, when you only have, you only get a few days to, at the start of your career, or the course of a ten-month employment around the twelve.
Got it, okay, so really quick, so, yeah, really quick, can we
It just, there is a, there is a mandate by law to report teacher chronic absenteeism, and it's the same data line, it's ten percent or eighteen days. And that is being chronically absent for teachers.
And year one, what was the numbers again for?
Seventeen.
So, okay, and then year two?
Twenty-four.
Thank you. So, really, so, basically, the ended here wasn't considered chronically absent year one, so we're probably just speaking about year two, or are you guys saying that's still a concern?
Oh, it's definitely still a concern. Yeah, seventeen days
One day, five of ten percent.
Yeah, over the course of a ten-month period, it's
You should know, they're counting half-days as a full day.
They're counting half-days as a full day.
Half-days a full, okay.
That's what they're counting, half-days is a full day.
If you go into my front line and look at all of my absences, my half-days are counted as full days.
Any other questions? Yes, Chandler.
I just wanna say that, what can you add? I just wanna say to Charles, to the district, I am not convinced. I believe that the way you graduated M is completely wrong. As a board member, I'm gonna continue to fight, to keep effective and good teachers. I don't know if I can make a motion to
As long as there are no other questions, I just want to...
Any other questions?
Did everyone's... I just want to make sure that all the que, has everyone, and, uh, John.
Any, any, uh, before...
I'd love to be further.
You guys want to make a motion?
Chairman, I'm making a motion to reject the superintendent's recommendation for this non-renewal.
So, we have a motion to reject the superintendent's recommendation for this non-renewal made by Chairman Mahabul. He's there on second. It's been seconded by Chairman Jones. Any discussion about this item? Correct, he's called the one.
Hughes. I'm sorry. The motion is to reject the superintendent's recommendation.
To non-ten-year, what, is it, am I saying it right? To non-ten-year?
To reject the recommendation of the superintendent not to renew the teaching contract.
No.
To non-renewal.
I'm saying no to rejecting the recommendation. Jones?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
As soon as you report it, can you just report it, and then we'll move on to the next case?
Hughes, yeah. Jones, yeah. What is it?
Yeah.
A yay, I'm sorry. Student yay. So, very young yay.
How many is that, yay name?
Two ways.
All right, thank you, thank you. We want to... Let me clarify, do we send, send ones?
Sure.
Legal counsel, if you provide us.
I don't, there's nothing new that wouldn't have anything different to say. I think this is the next candidate. I think there are only two.
Right.
Okay, you start with Mr. President.
Mr. President, the recommendation for non-renewal of Teacher Sam Wallace is based upon a continuing struggle to complete the job due to expected of teachers. Really, and in essence, there is considerable concern about the state of the Del Cesto Library during the course of the 24-25 school year. And I have pictures that I could show you, but after repeated instruction to actually set up the library for students, which continued throughout the fall and into early spring of this school year, the library continued not to be a place of instruction or suitable place of instruction for students. So, I'll share with you some photos, just so you can understand.
We're not just in the document, just in the document.
You're right.
God, legal counsel is...
I'm not showing them as, I'm not offering them as evidence, I'm just showing...
You're offering documents. I would suggest that that's not the procedure. Really quick, legal counsel, can you...
We can show the documents. They're not going to be introduced to evidence.
What's the point of showing up? They're not...
Well, it's, you guys, I mean, you don't really take my word for...
Well, I ain't...
You don't have to say, so I need to...
What's the problem? Why would you object to it?
I'm objecting because this is not a documentary hearing. So, now he's introducing documents. He's saying, "I'm not going to make them a full exhibit, but I'm going to have the whole committee look at them."
I have a whole bunch of emails I could have submitted. I mean, I got a whole bunch. Do you mind me to go print them?
This is a bad precedent. Do you know, Sarah, that this is not the evidentiary hearing?
Okay, if you could explain what is depicted in these pictures, will we pull them from the board?
You already have them. I've submitted testimony to you.
If you could describe...
Sure, so...
The used words, no...
I'll try my, I'll try my best. So, continued, continuing through the period of March of this school year, the state of the Del Cesto Library was not a place for construction of students. There was construction that occurred within the library over the course of the summer. And beginning with the fall, you know, there were repeated efforts to ask Teacher Wallace to get the library in some type of order so that it could be a place used for instruction for students. You know, through that time, that, those efforts were unsuccessful until ultimately, a district administrator was sent to Del Cesto to actually set up the library instead. And when asked for support from Teacher Wallace in collaboration, there was no response to the email that administrator sent. I have that document as well. So, really, then there's, in addition to the state of the library, there was concerns regarding just general classroom management and student safety. So, there's repeated use of phones in the library by Del Cesto students who would tell assistant principals that they're allowed to use, utilize them here. And during that time, Teacher Wallace was present, but wouldn't speak or redirect the students who were utilizing the phone, so spoken to by the AP. In addition to that, there was an event where there was concern about students being summoned to the library rather than actually being in their classroom where they were supposed to be. They were directed over PA systems to come to the library, interfering with their instructional time. And then I've heard too, I guess, surprise them of the status of Teacher Wallace's continued employment with the district, which, frankly, is an adult matter and should not be the basis for the dialogue with students, especially with students during instructional time. So, really, that, those are the bases for the recommendation. The state of the, the existing state of the library, the use of instructional time with students in an inappropriate way, and the ability to manage students while in the library. And I think that those are the concerns of the administrative team there. They're documented, and I can see that I have photos here that would demonstrate that. In addition to that, there's also attendance-related concerns during the course of this year, which had seventeen absences for Teacher Wallace. So, you know, similar concerns as it relates to that as Teacher Schluter. And that is the basis for the recommendations.
Mr. Simone?
I think, did you say the seventeen absences this year?
Yes.
Could you just specify when Teacher Wallace began? I think we have...
Yeah, so, let's, there, let's see right there. I believe this is... I think this is Sam's third year in the district, so this is her...
There.
This is their ten, uh, tenor year. So, this is the third year.
So, they began 22, 23, 23, 24 was year two, and 24, 25 is this year. And the absences that you just described was in 24, 25?
Correct.
Mr. Simone?
Yes. First of all, it's amazing that they're doing construction in the library and they're trying to blame for the, for the library. It's actually amazing. But the construction started in June of 2023, and it went through October of 2023. And during that period of time, Sam did the best she could with the library, but there were construction issues in the library.
Oh, to clarify, I wasn't in the library.
Right.
I was in the classroom. I would have had that, no access to the space, and I was never told when construction ended.
So, she wasn't able to be in the library because of the construction. And I would point out to the board, she started out as a school culture coordinator. Her last evaluation was 8.69, which is a very good evaluation. She's, uh, she's had 200, 230 students. She's part of a student safety plan, which means if a student is in crisis, she's one of the people, she has the credentials for the student to meet with her and secure the crisis for the student. She's been very dedicated. And again, this is the same school where the principal left, started after Thanksgiving in November. So, the very end of November, the principal started. Sam was never given any type of guidance by the principal. The principal's never went in the library, as far as Sam knows. Never talked to Sam. Never gave her any type of guidance or any question.
We did meet, and I was told to put the books on the shelves. And I asked for specific goals. Putting books on the shelves, as I've submitted testimony to y'all multiple times, requires organization. The last time that the library had an inventory was 10 years ago. These are books coming out that have the N-word in them. I can't put them on the shelves randomly. When I asked, because other buildings went through construction, I was the only librarian asked to have no plans to the district. No other librarians were asked to do that. I had no feedback on my plans. And I only have, at most, three hours a week to do anything related to library, which includes checking out books.
Being a fact that they give you two conflicting recommendations. One, they said to put books on the shelves, and then they said do a Battle of the Books program, which is conflicting with each other. She wrote an email saying, "Which of you do you want to do?" And they never responded.
I got directions from Tracy Boothman to put books on the shelves. Tracy Boothman showed up in my class while I was teaching, while I was covering the class, to meet with me. I had no prior understanding that a meeting was occurring and said, "Hey, what do you need?" And I was like, "I don't know, I'm covering the class right now. What do you mean by, like, who are you? What, what's going on?"
Want to clarify, who's Tracy?
A great question. Um, I mean, the organizational chart at the time hadn't been updated. I literally didn't know who this person was. And when I asked what their job title was, they said, "I don't know, coordinator, director, special projects, I'm not sure." The organizational chart has been updated since June 9th, but it previously hadn't been updated before that. So, I, I researched. I went into Outlook and said, "Who's this person? Why are they telling me to put books in the library?"
Really quick, Mr. Simone, can you just...
Tracy Boothman was the administrator that I just spoke to that came actually to set up the library in March.
Okay, thank you.
So, I mean, I would suggest to the board that this is really an unfair recommendation. Sam was put in a situation where there was a library under construction. There was a new principal who came late November. And she was giving conflicting directives, what to do with the library. And she's been a dedicated teacher. And as you can tell, her students love her. They, and it's, it's, it's been, you know, a real tough pill to swallow when you have a recommendation to non-renew a teacher based on a library that's under construction. It just makes no sense. And I would submit, one of the things that they said at the beginning was, you know, the teacher evaluations, her evaluation is 3.69. So, why are you non-renewing this particular teacher? What is the impetus of it? How did, how did the non-renewal process even stop? So, I would suggest that, again, you should not accept the recommendation of the PBS superintendent.
Yeah, no, I think I've described the basis for the recommendation. You know, the construction conceded, ended in October, throughout the period of October through March, because it was not an appropriate learning space.
How many weeks are between October and March?
One week if you like. As it relates to the going forward, you know, teachers usually use their own time to set up their classrooms. Setting up your classroom or work environment is not something that's unique to librarians. That happens annually for teachers. They spend a considerable amount of time on their own to actually set up their classroom environment. So, I think that's part of an expectation that you have of any educator.
I did work for free by myself on Saturdays, all the time. Constantly.
And I would suggest that if the construction got completed sometime in October, the recommendation or the impetus of the non-renewal at the beginning of that process started probably sometime in December, because it had to come before the board, so by the January. So, that principal who newly came to the building has to notice, but the process begins well before that. That new principal initiated that process based on a library that was under construction only a month before the principal even got there? I mean, to me, talk about arbitrary and capricious. Can you get any more arbitrary?
Would you want to show anything before I...
I, I just wanted to make sure that nobody more needs additional questions.
I'm nothing present.
Any questions, that one?
Um, was there any information from the prior principal that informs this particular recommendation? And/or the trans, and I did not ask this in the previous conversation, but I'll ask this now. I understand that there was principal turnover. Was there turnover? Are there assistant principals within the Del Cesto building? And also, was there turnover or not for the transformation officer or the person tasked with supervising the principal as a, as a position, not the...
Not as a transformation officer, I don't believe that. I believe that he was the same. I don't believe there was a change in this.
I, yes, um, okay. So, just to be clear, so while there was turnover with the primary building administrator, the human person there, there was a, there was continuity directly above and directly below that position? Yes, is that, is that what you're saying? For both transformation officer and assistant principal, as far as you can answer in this moment?
To the best of our knowledge.
To the best of your knowledge in this moment, thank you. And clarifying, I think we've been through this, but the timeline of the construction as part of the brand-new media centers that we, that the district was able to accomplish across the district in many of our elementary and middle schools, that this project started in June 2023 and was completed on or around October 2024. And the district administrator came in March of 2025, and that is when...
November of '24.
No, no, the district administrator came in March 2025
Correct.
To, to set up the classroom, okay.
That's not true. They came two days before I got a non-renewal. I had three people show up.
But was that March, I'm asking about the date.
No, it was February 11th. Because I got a non-renewal on February 13th, 14th. Thank you. It was February 12th.
But not, not for purposes of setting up the classroom?
That was the reason.
And, but the classroom still wasn't set up until March?
I'm, I can read too, they emailed us that note. In, in response to that, there was no response. Here was my response. "Hey, y'all, thanks for this update. Apologies for my delay in, in presenting this plan. The timeline is linked here with a working task list and additional tab. So, I included an Excel document with a timeline and then a task list. I want people to understand that this took time. I have at most two to three hours of open library time each week to check in books, maintain the space, assist students with questions, and begin reading. I've also been tasked from my district library supervisor, third, to run the Battle of the Books program. During this time, I will connect Ms. Boothman, third, and Principal Curante on an additional email chain to best understand how I should prioritize these few hours. I want to stress to leadership that the library is running beautifully. Students are checking out books on our genrefied shelves, we're using the space for high school applications, and there is utilization of technology and positive learning environments among countless other contributions to the community. As the construction of the library was not communicated to me, I am unsure what awaits me in the library boxes. Del Cesto was without a librarian for two years. And when I reopened the library, I was unable to complete an inventory. As such, the current library inventory date is almost 10 years, last completed in 2017. I sent this in a little bit ago." among countless other contributions to the community. As the construction of the library was not communicated to me, I am unsure what awaits me in the library boxes. Delsesto was without a librarian for two years. And when I reopened the library, I was unable to complete an inventory. As such, the current library inventory day is almost ten years. Last completed in 2017, I sent this in a little bit ago. At that time, the average outpatient year was 1998. This means a lot of work is ahead of me in putting the books on the shelves. It seems from Ms. Boothman's communication that other schools had, other library renovations had paid teams of fall at staff who shut down the library from classes with coverage. If this is an option the district can support with, that would be wonderful. I'm going to continue reading the email. As a result, I received one day of coverage with untrained district folks. Third, Tracy and Dr. Edwards came in to help me shell. They don't know libraries. I had to train three volunteers. I had five hours to set up a space that is, I don't know, y'all, bigger than this space.
Bigger than this.
Yeah, bigger than this space, right? Thousands of books, thousands. Adding books to the shelves is not an end goal in the library. A library requires constant addition and subtraction as part of regular library work. Please let me know if there is a clear end goal spatially that I should work towards. And I had conversations with my admin. Is there a shelf you need me to set up? I can set up a shelf. Is there a wall you need me to set up? Like, is this to show that the construction is done? I'm happy to do that. Tell me what you need. And it was no, books on the shelves. Please note that for each book housed in Delsesto, there's a process to add it back into the collection. I literally have to scan every book, y'all. To be sure it has a spine label, barcode, address label, and update for the file and the Destiny Follet System. In order to do that, I need a budget, because like, I need book tape, and I need genre stickers, and I need barcode labels. I have no budget, I haven't had a budget in years. I bought those things. I have to, or I have to do a process to remove it. We have to remove all stickers, we have to stamp it with a discard stamp. Again, this is a library professional standard advised by the American Library Association. This is a national library standard. While the task list to get the books on the shelves may be short, the process itself is long. I also want to connect district staff Tracy Boothman, Third, as I am receiving additional expectations of my time in running the Battle of Books program. I have additional plans to use the paid hours with additional unpaid Saturdays when I can. I need guidance of how to track and submit these hours for payment, please, and the exact number of paid hours I have available. I never received written notification of how many paid hours I could have or how to submit those hours. I still don't know, I'm like, going to write my clerk in though. I would like to note that I was unaware I had a meeting scheduled with Ms. Boothman. In the future, if the district staff needs to meet with me, I would appreciate having coverage, because I was not able to speak with Ms. Boothman clearly, as I have coverage for Mr. Dietz's room on 121. And many students were asking for assistance in the library, which interrupted our conversation. Let me know if there are questions. I appreciate your support. I had no response to this email. I sent this email on January 24th.
Thank you for that additional context. That is a very comprehensive.
Thank you, I had it by so many people.
I want to pivot, there was something else that Mr. Rodario shared that I wanted to get clarification on either from them or a response from, from Teacher Wallace or their council. You mentioned something around classroom management and safety concerns. Talked with the phones, that's a separate topic I don't want to ask too much about. I'm concerned about, can you tell me more about the students being directed to the library during other instructional times?
Sure.
And specifically, you said that that was potentially specific to discussing Teacher Wallace's employment? Can you talk more about that?
Sure, so, you know, before I do that, I just want to follow up on the point you were mentioning before. If I, if I could just briefly, so just in terms of clarification as it relates to the setting up of the library itself. We have emails within the February break period asking, asking them to go and set up the room during, you know, any period that could possibly, could possibly work. Those emails went unheeded, prompting the continued status of the library. Still have all of these books in boxes as of March 18th, just shoved in corners with empty shelves, which is what prompted Ms. Boothman to come to the library and then set up the actual books within the library. So, and now they are in fact set up.
I wish, trust.
And I would point out, March, the decision to non-renew happened well before. Well before, yeah, the library still wasn't set up at the time.
So, you know, as it relates to your concern regarding the classroom, there was just a specific incident where it was mentioned over the P A system that students were to report to the library. This, I think, was during the morning of, or morning, I think, in, I don't know, like, March or April regarding that event. And directed during instructional time to just report to the library instead of reporting to the classes that they were supposed to report to. So I, I don't know if there's?
It is untrue. It is untrue. And also, why is all this evidence being presented against me after this decision? Y'all, I'm the most exploited employee.
I was just going to point out, as Sam just did, I mean, you're looking at a decision that was made sometime in December, January. You're bringing up things that occurred in March and after that, which tells you they didn't have any reason to non-renew the teachers. That's the point.
We've gone through our presentation, I give you the basis for the recommendation.
Yes, really quick, is there any other board members that have comments?
So just, was, okay, then let me be more direct with this question. Was, was there a time in which? Can I direct my question to the, the teacher doing the presentation?
You should pass the teacher.
I, I, this is, yeah. I just wanted to do a quick. So, so do you dispute the fact, or do you dispute the assertion that there was a time that you solicited student feedback about your employment situation? And if so, how was, how was testimony collected for, in support of your, of asking the board to overturn the non-renewal?
Do you mind rephrasing the question? I don't really have a reason.
Okay, so, so we heard from district council that in March, they have information that says that students were called to the library, would have reason.
Can I pause you there?
Yeah.
The students were not called. I actually have, I have a text exchange with my principal. I had a meeting.
But that's not what my question is now. So my question is, was there a time at all, whether that occurred or not, was there a time at all when you solicited student testimony in support of overturning your non-renewal?
There was a time when I told my students that I was fired, because I work at Delsesto and I teach the siblings of my students. And that's really important for them to know that I'm not leaving them.
Chairwoman. Sam, this suggests to me personally, a personal opinion. I think that you are an amazing teacher, an amazing librarian, and you're amazing. And I really believe that you go above and beyond for our students. I mean, you just share that you even volunteer your weekends, you know, to make your tasks get done. If there's no other?
I have one, but you, I'm gonna go last. Chairwoman.
This is about the email you, you read out. You said you sent it out in January, and the construction finished in October.
Yeah, I mean, I can read the email I responded to.
Was there, was there a reason, did they tell you between October and January a date? Or was there a reason that you waited until January to give that plan?
Yeah, I mean, so the plan itself wasn't requested until a couple of weeks prior. This email is responding to the email that said I had no response to. This is my response to that email that was sent from Tracy Boothman. So, hold on, I gotta, uh, let me find out. Okay. So it was two weeks later. She sent January 9th. Hi, Sam W., I am working to help with redesign for the district, and I was wondering if you could let me know what resources you need to get the books in the library shelved. I've reached out to another middle school librarian, Jim Barrett, to see if he, what help he may be available. He may be in touch with the past couple of days. In the meantime, I believe that Kayla and Sam are willing to work with you to scout resources. I actually had, embarrassingly, a draft of this email because I didn't really know how to explain to Tracy, like, what was going on. And then I also was like, I don't know, like, I want to default to Third because Third is my library supervisor, and Third is asking me to run Battle of the Books. So I don't want to overstep, because as you can kind of see, this is a tricky one to navigate. So I was like, I don't want to respond to her without responding to, like, to make sure that, like, Third knows what I'm doing, because I want to, I have three hours a week. So I drafted almost the same email, and, you know, and I just asked for, like, you know, patience and a goal.
To answer your question, though, she responded to a January 9th?
Yeah, I guess that's it. If it's January 9th is Monday, 21st, I'm going to tell you.
January 9th is the first, and actually, I actually am responding to a January 21st email, so I feel better. Hi, Sam, I'm sending you Mr. Barrett's ideas for the library. I've had success with similar recruitment. I hope this helps, including Jim Barrett adding the bishop. So Jim's ideas were like, reach out to volunteers. How about you get parents? And then in that email chain, it talks about how the reason that Jim was able to set up his library, because he had paid fall at employees. It said, just a quick note for now, those were fall at employees with time left over on a contract with the district to set up the renovated library media centers for elementary. So they had paid people to set that up, and that's awesome.
I, I, I think, so, so are we saying there's a, there's a safety concern? Is that, is that what we're saying?
I didn't mention a single incident where there was a safety concern for students coming, being unaccounted for, coming to the library on that particular day I mentioned in late March. That was a concern that they weren't accounted for.
And, and unaccounted for in a way of, you're saying?
Not where they were supposed to be, they were directed to come to the library with the P A system, that weren't, that were assigned to the teacher.
The P A system?
Yes.
Who had, who made that announcement?
My understanding is, yes, it was Wallace.
I never made an announcement for kids to come to the library.
Okay, and then the, is it their concern about attendance?
Yes, just in the last part of this year. This is their third year, but this year, Teacher Wallace has been on seventeen absences.
All right, how many years is Sam?
This is their third year.
All right, and then the past two years, what was the?
Attendance was not a problem, I assume, if I know.
Okay. I just want to make sure I have everything. Cell phones, is that something as well that was a concern?
Yeah, the use of cell phones in the classroom environment was a concern identified by the administrator.
Okay, okay. What kind of concern was it?
Just not addressing it, it being random, not having any direction.
I, I've been removed from elementary school for every long time now. And I, oh, middle, what am I talking about? Middle school as well. So, middle school, is it, is that like part of a class library? Is that like, okay, and what do they, let's talk, I'm so sorry.
I was like state standards, I mean, I, when I say teach 233 kids, like, I teach for a full, like, I need you to think of me as an art teacher. I don't have library time, you guys. I, I give instruction. I, we read books, we do graphic novels, we do photography assignments.